And that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12, pursuant to the executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously. To this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the SAU 21 Joint School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 929-205-6099, and the password is 934-207-489. Or you can click the website which is listed on the agenda. We gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have been provided on the website of the SAU 21 office at www.sau21.org. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email at reevans@SAU21.org. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law.
Take attendance and just remind you all to unmute your microphones. Erin Stanton.
Here with family members.
Forrest Carter. Greg Marrow. Greg Parrish.
Present with family in and out of room.
Greg Duffy.
Present alone.
Henry Marsh.
Present alone.
Jessica Brown.
Present with family members.
Jim Keim.
I'm present and alone.
John Bailey.
Present with family members in and out.
Leslie LaFond.
Present and alone.
Mark Lane. Mike Rabideau.
Present and alone.
Rebecca Burdick.
Present, family in the room.
Sharon Gordon.
Present with family around.
Tom Von Jess.
Present alone.
Heidi Terrasina.
Present with family in the room.
Jason Ferrius.
Present alone.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Here with alone.
Kelly Huber.
Present with family in the house.
Martin Tavashian.
Present and alone.
Nermina Peterson.
Present alone.
And Tony Delano.
Present with family in and out.
Okay, the roll call's been taken. Thank you.
Okay, so we want to go through an update before we get to the couple of action items that we have for tonight. I'm going to be fairly brief. So we had a principal meeting this morning and we spent a lot of time at that meeting talking about end of the year celebrations and events. I will say that we're still waiting on a document from the Department of Education around end of year celebrations. We were supposed to receive it, according to the commissioner, by the end of the day on Friday, but we're still waiting for it. I have a suspicion that one of the reasons we haven't received it is that they're trying to match it up with the governor's extension of the stay at home order. And what kinds of things he may relax in that stay at home order. It expires on May 4th. There's word that he's going to extend it, but he's going to modify some conditions of it. So we have a sense that they may be trying to match up these documents. Despite that, principals are proceeding with setting up eighth grade graduations, high school graduations, end of the year events, those kinds of things. They're being very creative. And they're working with the right people in their buildings around trying to figure out which events might have to be online, whether they can create experiences that sort of replicate trips that eighth graders were going to take, lawn signs, parades, yearbook distribution, cap and gown distribution. All of those kinds of things are things that they're trying to take into account. And again, they're flying a little blind right now in that we don't have this guidance from the department yet, which I hope we have in the next day or two. They'll be reporting on details of those things at your upcoming board meetings and in between. The high school principal, for example, he and I are sending, we've promised a letter every week to seniors and families of seniors, sort of updating them on what kinds of things are being thought of. I should also tell you that our elementary principals are all joining us for that Saturday morning call this week, so that they'll be there to sort of brief parents on the kinds of things that they're talking about and then to answer questions. And Bill McGowan's coming on again with us on May the 9th. That's the week after next. So a lot of good work going on that you're going to hear a lot more about in the next few weeks. Secondly, and then I'll be done, we've sort of turned our attention to re-entering schools, return to school work. And there are starting to be some things published that sort of provide a roadmap for that. I said to principals this morning, we've sort of stuck our toe in the water in starting to talk about the kinds of committees we have to form, the kinds of work that has to go on, timelines for some of that, who belongs on some of those committees. We have a meeting set aside for quite a bit of time tomorrow to begin to work through that in a little bit more detail. But that's sort of next piece for us is to work through what that process might need to look like in terms of re-entering. And there's a lot of great pieces in the guidance that we've received on how we best take care of members of the class of 2020 who are going to struggle with accessing colleges and their next steps, technology needs that we're going to have, how do we plan for what a lot of experts are saying, maybe this in one form or another into next year, in sort of rolling closures, those kinds of things. How are we thinking about those things and planning for them? So we're going to start talking with you and forming groups to start looking at some of those things in earnest, probably within the next week. So with that, and if you have any questions, please just interrupt. I'll turn it over to David.
Thanks. Yeah, likewise, I'll keep it pretty brief tonight. Yeah, our focus has really kind of changed into summer and fall, what things look like when we come back. And as I said last time, we're really looking for creativity with respect to programming, ways to kind of address some of the credit recovery concerns that we know are going to be coming, provide bridge programming between eighth and ninth grade and address gaps. So I had two interesting conversations that I'll talk to you about tonight. One was with Donna Katur actually at the high school around ELOs. And looking at the ELO model as a way to address some of those gaps in learning, whether it be connecting students with community partners or mentor opportunities, those kinds of things. So that's in preliminary discussions, but I'm pretty positive about it. And second is math scheduling. One of the things we're doing right now at the high school is the master schedule. And as most of you guys know, we have a two trimester geometry honors section that we are going to purposely push to trimester two, trimester three, in order to create some flexibility in that first trimester for algebra. And any kind of the skill development that we need associated with algebra. So those are two of the ways we're trying to be a little bit creative about delivering content and making sure we address the gaps in learning. With that, I'll turn it over unless you guys have questions.
David, Greg Parrish, in your conversations, are you talking about adding some more structure for the kids? What I'm taking from my kids is they would like more structure in their day. They feel there's not enough and that there's probably too much free time, ironically, but I don't know if you're having structure type conversations.
In their day right now, Greg, you're talking about, you're not talking about the fall, you're talking about right now.
Well, I'm talking about right now, but if we move forward and use a plan similar to this going into the fall, I don't know if those conversations are taking place. Sorry about that confusion.
That's great. Thanks.
Yeah, that's perfect. We did have that discussion in the curriculum coordinators meeting. That was yesterday now. Yesterday, and that was the tone of the conversation. Hey, look, this is the way things look for the spring. However, if this thing goes longer, we are going to need to iterate this or evolve this in a way that makes sense for families and makes sense for kids. So yes, it's on the table for sure.
And do those conversations try to emulate what the school schedule is on a daily basis? I know how challenging that can be, but is that part of the conversation?
I think, I think right now the conversation is right around setting up guardrails. Okay, let's look at how we can kind of parse the day apart and see how it might relate or mimic a school day schedule. I don't think we're into the mimicry down to the mentor, down to the schedule. But yeah, certainly setting up guardrails around discipline specific times. I think that's on the table. And it was brought up actually at high school.
But Greg, where we.
Go ahead, Bill.
Where we will have those. So part of this exercise will be envisioning different models. If we end up with certain social distancing structures that limit the number of kids we'd have in the building at the time, kids will need to access some courses in this kind of environment. And yes, you'll see much more. My guess is you would see much more structure to that schedule of courses that they might take from outside the building.
Okay, okay.
If that makes sense.
Thank you. It does. Thank you. So Dr. Lupini and Dr. Cropper, are there things that the teachers will need from us in terms of resources, training, whatever, in order to help them get from where we are today, which many are there, but not everyone, right? To the future state of this is an expectation, we need to respond differently going forward.
So Tom, that's a great question, and it's really one of the functions of this process that we're putting together is to figure out what we do need to get there. We've been, I mean, Matt's going to talk in a minute about conversations we've had with town officials over the last couple of days. And while we've told them that we want to be partners in terms of making sure, you know, their budgets can work, we've emphasized also that there are going to be some additional needs in terms of things we have to do to prepare for whatever the heck this looks like in the fall. And some of those are professional developments, some of those are technology, some of those are, there's all kinds of pieces. And that's what that returning to school exercise will look like.
Great. Thank you.
Hey, Bill, Greg Duffy, just to add on to Greg Parrish's comments is, so I have a cross-section of children as well in the school, in the different schools. And I think from our side, it's kind of a mixed bag. And I'm hearing from members of the community as well, whereas some students could handle more. The opposite is also happening where some kids are getting piled on as well. So I think it's just, it's a mixed bag and the coordination that you guys are certainly working on to help make sure that that it's even and that the teachers are working with each other across each discipline to make sure that they're not overloading the children as well. And to make sure that the kids are getting enough to do also.
The tough part of that is that can vary for different kids who are in the same class with the same teacher. Right? Yeah. And that's the, that's the thing that we do better when we're face to face than we can do in this environment. So you know, sort of a post-mortem of this experience will be part of that planning for the next phases. Dr. Akilian?
Thank you. Oh, did you have a question, Kelly?
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that I have twins and they're both obviously in third grade and they have two different teachers. So I agree with both. I think one child has a lot of structure and the other one is really overwhelmed. So I think, you know, I think it's just everybody's trying to learn, everybody's trying to get adjusted. And I think although the teachers are all doing a great job, you know, I think that there, you know, the struggles everywhere. And like you said, every kid is, you know, every child is different. So yeah, I mean, I just think that's what we're dealing with right now.
Yeah.
It's not bad, you know, no complaints, just I think that two teachers in the same grade are definitely doing things different. One may be a little bit, you know, more work than the other. So.
Yeah.
I think, I think one of the things too that I've heard is the lack of face to face with the students is affecting them. You know what I mean? And it's not so much that I think the teachers need to be, they, the students are missing that, you know what I mean? And I just don't, I don't know that there's any way that we can change that, but I just know that that is one of the things, which is actually kind of a nice thing to hear that they miss.
Yes, thank you.
Staff are too. Staff are missing. Kids too. As we've seen in all the staff videos.
Those were great.
My God, I cried.
Yep.
So every single one, every sign is we miss you, we miss you, I want to see you. All of that.
Just one quick thing to add to that is the face to face time. I think a lot of the teachers are offering it, at least on our side, and there is one to two kids on when that time is being offered. So in terms of like, like the middle school, there's a lot being offered and it's repeated where there's like, you know, I don't know, my daughter and like two other kids on, and that same option is there for all the other students. It's just about, is somebody at home encouraging it? Is it their choice to get on? So I think it's, again, both sides.
Hey. I just have a quick question to follow up on what Erin just said. What happens to the children that aren't participating at all in any type of work? I had some people, you know, concerned with, you know, children that were in middle school that were typically struggling and all of a sudden were starting to do really well. And now they're out of school and they're just really not participating. I'm not sure if anybody at home is encouraging. Do teachers reach out? I mean, I know there's only so much you can do, but what happens in that case when a kid is not doing anything?
Yeah, so the, so the structure is that weekly contact with someone. I mean, we have a, in every school, we have a structure set up that if we're not in, and I know this isn't specifically what you're asking, but we have a structure set up that if we're not having some kind of contact with kids on a weekly basis with some adult, whether it's the teacher, a guidance counselor, someone who they identify with, then there are follow-up procedures that in some districts have ended up with wellness visits to the home by the police department who work with us. So we try to keep that kind of contact with every child with a structure that's set up. So there is, there is some attempt to contact, at least in terms of the way we've structured this in each building, with every child, at least on that once a week face to face basis. Caroline, do you want to add to that?
Sure, yeah. So if it's not the typical, okay, students turning in work, you know, the academic performance that, you know, they're engaged, then from there, the, you know, if the regular ed teacher is not successful in reaching out or not hearing from the student, then the next step would be to go to the school counselor, so to the guidance counselor, who would then look into it further. So, you know, if a student has an IEP, then there's a whole team connected to that student, right? So it might be that the special ed teacher has had contact or a speech language pathologist or a school psychologist or the nurse. Or sometimes it's the assistant principal who has the best contact with the student. So that's kind of reach out to all the people on the team at the school. And if still it is, it is, you know, not successful, then they would go to the next step, talk to administrators and determine if that should be a wellness check. Or unfortunately, sometimes it's a, it's a call to DCYF to make sure that the student is checked, checked in on. We did have a little bit of resistance as far as having some wellness checks because the police departments wanted to limit exposure for their police officers to potential, you know, coronavirus. But they're working with us to check in on, to check in on families.
I think one of the concerns is that these children just get passed on to the next grade. You know, I think that you have kids that are already struggling prior to this. And then now they're not really participating because for whatever reason, did we just pass them on? I think there's a fear there of some kids that might not be ready to be passed on and this hasn't helped this situation.
Right. And that's right, it hasn't. And the fear on the other side is of course retention and what we know about the research on retention. So that's what David was giving some examples earlier of the things that we're trying to do in those next grades to make sure that there is some, I'll use the word remediation, right? Or some kind of skill building in certain areas that didn't get covered in the way it normally would have gotten covered now. And so the high school's looking at some of those things for incoming eighth graders. We're going to have the same conversations in other grades. We actually already had some of them this morning. So we're trying not, not to make retention sort of a fallback position, right? And make sure that we build capacity in the next grade that kids would move on to to help with skills that they didn't encounter necessarily because we're not face to face during this time.
And I would add to that, that even students who are engaged, this is not an ideal situation, right? This is not a replacement for what we do. This is, this is an emergency way of delivering an instruction. So even for students, you know, with disabilities, sometimes in the building, they have trouble making progress. So this is certainly not, not best practice, not ideal for them. So I can just segue right into update here on that. Because what we're talking about with directors in special education is the summer. The commissioner and the governor have said that they would, I know we're waiting for another update this week about end of year events, but they also mentioned or promised by May 15th to have an announcement about summer and what would be allowed for summer. So, but you may be aware that that's too late in special ed world because we're having IEP meetings all throughout the year. And particularly at the end of the year, we have many, many, many IEP meetings, including those transition meetings from eighth to ninth grade. So in those meetings, we make decisions, the team makes a decision about, you know, what a student need the extended school year program, which occurs in the summer. So we have to be making a lot of these decisions before that May 15th announcement. So that being said, given what we know now that it's important to socially distance and to maintain safety, we are planning for remote learning for the summer. So across all our districts, we're planning for remote learning. And as was mentioned previously, there's, there will be different models. You know, this is not all of our students, so that can afford us even more creativity I'm aiming for in that, you know, we're hoping to employ as many of our staff that we usually have during the summer while maximizing the instruction for kids. So we're planning for remote instruction if, if there is the case that some of the restrictions are relaxed, it's possible that we'll have conversations about making some exceptions for some kids, whether that's receiving some services for students with the most significant needs. It could also mean possibly conducting some evaluations because we have dozens of evaluations that are currently on pause that are required. So it could be the case that on an individual basis where we really need that information from an evaluation, we move forward with that. But what we know is that, you know, whatever we begin to plan, we have to start thinking about, okay, will it still be a six foot social distancing? Would we still be needing to be wearing masks? Would we need to take temperature of kids in the parking lot? So we're planning for remote learning. And if we have to go there for certain exceptions, or if something changes, that's where we'll go. But that's what all the directors in SA21 are talking about. And that's also what, what all the directors in the state are talking about when I'm on those calls with those other directors. We're also paying close attention to social emotional concerns and how we can wrap around kids and help them transition back into the fall as easily and as safely and as comfortably as possible because we know this is a pretty traumatic event for all our kids. And when you layer on issues that come with disability, it can be even more anxiety provoking and scary. So we're working on all of those preparations now as part of our SA21 re-entry plans, taking all of that into consideration.
Caroline just laid out sort of ESY for the summer and that's, that's sort of the guiding, the guidance that we've given all the principals in terms of thinking about any summer program, that we should assume right now that any program that we would run in the summer would be remote. And we should be, we should be thinking about whether the program in question, you pick the program, lends itself to a remote environment. For example, Greg, I'm looking at you thinking of a STEAM camp that runs at Hampton Falls at Lincoln Acreman. And so the conversation has to be had about whether we think that could run in a remote environment. And the answer for some of these may be that these experiences don't lend themselves to that remote environment. And we may not do them this year if that's where we still are in July and August. Any questions on any of that?
No, but Dr. Lupini, I'll just toss up one more thing. As you do your after-action review, kind of your post-mortem, whatever you call it, I'm sure you're already thinking about this, but I would encourage you and all of the staff to try to figure out if the cadence, what the right cadence is for check-ins. I understand this whole thing was new. I understand it might be different by grade. I understand it might be different by student and their need in terms of special ed or not. But I just, check that out if you don't mind.
Yep, it's a great point. Thank you. Yep. Mr. Ferrari, I know you're here somewhere.
Yes, I am. So as Bill had mentioned, we have started meeting with our various town administrators, as well as a few budget committee chairs and select board members. And really our focus is to talk about the challenges ahead for our various communities during this pandemic. Specifically, we want to better understand their perspective, really on revenue collection as well as budgets. And finally, as part of those meetings, we are providing them an update on our school financial outlook, the cost savings activities that we're performing, as well as the potential funding sources that we're seeing, you know, from the state and federal level. So we have already met with Hampton, Southampton, Hampton Falls and Seabrook. And we are scheduled to meet with Northampton tomorrow. I will say.
I think it's next week, Matt. I think it's actually next week.
Oh, is it next week?
Yeah, I think it's actually next.
I'm just so excited about another one of those meetings. Getting ahead of myself. So, so next week we're meeting with Northampton. But I will say, as like, after meeting with four towns, I think the common theme is that no one, no one really knows the degree, the degree that this crisis will affect tax revenue. You know, all of our towns are analyzing the data, you know, based on various factors. I mean, some of them are looking at 2008 recession numbers and what type of, you know, percentage collections they got, you know, in the aftermath of that crisis. They're looking at. They're looking at, you know, the percentage of properties that are in escrow because they're, they're making the assumption that those properties will be paid or have a much higher percentage. They're looking at proportion of residential versus their business on properties. So that's, that's difference, you know, by town, obviously. You know, the towns of Hampton and Seabrook are disproportionately affected by the business component versus, you know, some of our other, you know, Northampton, Hampton Falls and, and Southampton, which rely more on residential property tax. You know, they, they, they even go as deep as to look at, you know, retired, number of retirees in the town. You know, one of our towns was looking, had, had the data on, you know, actual professions of their residents and who they thought were still working remotely from home and who might be, you know, out of work. So, I mean, they're, they're taking a close look, you know, at, you know, at, at our various communities and, you know, trying to model how, you know, how we'll be affected. But that being said, they, they really, they have no, I mean, there's really, there's no model that currently exists that can accurately predict the effect on tax collections. They all, they all had a common theme that they will have a better idea after July first, when property taxes are due. So as such, we have set up follow up meetings with at least those four towns to, to really maintain that open line of communication as we, we, we proceed through this, this crisis. So, and that varies, you know, one of our towns we're meeting monthly, a couple others, they, they want to wait until after those July first collections. And then we can have a more in-depth conversation. So that was, that was the discussion on the towns. Bill, did you want to add anything about the towns or?
Just to say this, that I think, and, and we obviously had relationships, better relationships than in others with some of these towns. But I think the strength of these four meetings so far, I agree with Matt, the one commonality was let's talk after July first. The second was they were appreciative that we reached out, right? In, in every case, you know, some of these towns, the schools and towns haven't necessarily enjoyed the best relationship. These were really positive conversations where people were really appreciative that, that we had taken the time to, to reach out to them and wanted to have a continuing conversation about, about what was going on. And I think in the end, that sort of relationship building may end up being, being the best thing that we accomplish out of these meetings.
We're all one community and I think we have always had the, the mindset that we're partners with the towns. I mean, we really have to be. And we, we, we want to, to put that first step forward and make sure that we're working together in, in step and, and, and get through the, I mean, because this is a, this is a tough situation. So from a financial standpoint for our schools, you know, there, there's not much new from the last update. However, we do anticipate receiving guidance from the state on the exact amount of care funds that we're eligible for, for as well as what, what expenditures will qualify. You know, additionally, we continue to monitor FEMA and other stimulus funding opportunities. And in the meantime, all of our budgets are effectively frozen except for our remote learning specific expenditures or any essential activities in order for us to operate. You know, as previously mentioned, you know, we have a number of accounts that we, we should be, we are recognizing savings on. You know, I will review those specific accounts by district as well as the projected year end forecast individually with each of the boards in, during the May school board meetings. So we, we can go, we'll go more in depth district specific at, at those May board meetings. But across all of our districts, I will reiterate that we are committed to, to not bringing forth any unbudgeted year end projects, you know, from any, you know, any potential unexpendited funds. You know, if, you know, with any savings that we do recognize, and it's different by district. I mean, we, we have, you know, some districts that have, have more than others. We do, whatever that amount is, we do intend to return the maximum amount of available funds to our towns in order to offset assessments, you know, for our taxpayers and our community. So finally, as we look to next year, you know, as, as Bill, you know, and actually all the conversation preceding me alluded to, you know, we, we are going to have additional costs when we reopen buildings. You know, we, we're still, we're still waiting on guidance as to exactly how that will look. And, but once we develop that plan and, and determine what that, you know, what that may look like, we are, we, we know that there will be costs associated. You know, we all know what an incredible job our teachers are doing. But, you know, as is inherent with an online format, it doesn't replace in-person instruction. So there is going to be some gaps. We are going to have to get students up to speed. So we're going to have to provide those necessary supports and there's costs associated with those supports. You know, additionally, we have, as, as Caroline mentioned, we have, you know, our students with special needs that there will be some compensatory services that will be an additional cost. We know that there's going to be, you know, that while we, there will likely be, you know, P P E costs for potentially for students and, and staff. There'll be extra disinfecting costs, cleaning costs. You know, there, you know, social emotional support is huge. You know, we, we may need to look at some, you know, extra social work to support not only our students, but our staff members. People are suffering, so there may be costs there. But really, we're, we're, we're waiting on some of that guidance. And once we develop a roadmap and a plan for reentry, we'll be able to better quantify these costs. But the bottom line is that, you know, with school looking differently next year, there will be, you know, added costs there. So as such, you know, over the course of the next few weeks, we are meeting with our principals. And we're reviewing all of our budget assumptions from the, from our budget process this past year. So as you know, we budget out twelve months in advance, things change. So we're looking at all of our assumptions, which include potential enrollment changes, you know, changes in potentially programming, curricula, or other assumptions that we made when we budgeted, you know, a year prior to the start of the year. So that could, that could affect staffing. You know, as you know, personnel is, is the highest cost within our school districts. So as we, as we're look, as we have turnover and we, and we do have, you know, positions that we're looking to replace now, we are going to do a comprehensive analysis as to whether that position is necessary to replace or if we can move positions around. You know, we're, we're going to take a hard look at every department on a department by department basis and account by account basis and re, and revisit the assumptions that we made when we budgeted and see where there is potential savings. Now, we, we conduct this exercise, you know, every year on an informal basis, but this year we're really going to take a hard look. And we may need to make some hard decisions because we really, we really understand what our community is going through and what they will be going through. And we need to take into account that economic toll on the community. And we also understand that we have some investment and some costs for that reentry. So that combination results in, you know, some tough decisions. So that's my positive news from the financial front.
Thanks so much, Matt. Any questions on any of that?
Hey, Bill, Armina Peterson. So my question is, when we do go back to school and transition these grades into the next, is there going to be any kind of assessment for the kids to kind of focus or help where need is, is truly needed and let go of the ones that are, did alright? I know this is not ideal for anybody. Our Northampton School has an amazing job and are there and available for children in these kinds of classrooms and everything. But is there going to be any kind of assessment or is there talk about it as we transition back in?
So it, it won't be this, David, you jumped in here where you like. It won't be the state assessments. The, quite frankly, I'm not sure what they tell us to begin with, but, but they don't, they don't help us sort of diagnose, you know, where kids have individual needs. We have an array of assessments that are in place across the districts that in, in varying forms, we will utilize to figure out where kids are and where individual kids have needs and how to go about providing those. So David, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, thank, and that was a great question. Thank you for that. One primary feedback that we're getting from classroom teachers and administrators right now is focus on time in the classroom and focus on local diagnostics, making sure that kids have time with their teachers and teachers can kind of assess where those students are rather than undergoing kind of that statewide assessment, right? That formalized assessment process. We just want time with our kids. That said, I think there are a lot of opportunities for classroom specific diagnostics, schoolwide diagnostics to kind of see where those gaps in learning have occurred, if they've occurred, and how best to address them. And that's going to be addressed through classroom instruction. It's going to be addressed through creativity and scheduling, all the things that kind of we've been bringing up. One quick.
And I don't even just generally mean, you know, statewide. I think this provides us quite a bit of information to our teachers as who's in class, who's doing what and how much and how well and all that stuff. And I'm just kind of curious if anybody's looking into some of these things to kind of look into the future and say, okay. I mean, I know my son's going to be lacking Spanish big time, so. And you're just kind of moving forward into some of these grades. I think we can definitely accumulate enough information to see where the need may be when we go back and, and how much of it.
Right. And so just a quick point on that, one of the things that we talked about in the, the Seacoast curriculum group is really the thankfulness that a lot of us have moved into the competency reporting and competency diagnostics just for the sake of information this spring. We're, we're going to have a boatload of information. Not that it's going to be completely accurate because of participation rates, equity and all that kind of stuff. But we do have a baseline in terms of what we've hit and what we haven't hit coming into the fall. So that's going to be part of the mix as well.
Okay. And are we looking at maybe a bigger summer program with more kids?
Well, see, that's an, I've had lots of conversations around this and it's an interesting question, namely because of the issue that we raised before, motivation. We're going, we're going to have teachers that are pretty fried. We're going to have students that might not be too excited about more remote learning after an entire spring of remote learning. So the programs that we put forward in a remote setting in the summer are going to have to be creative. We've, like I said, we're looking at even mentor relationships, mentor mentee relationships with students and other students to kind of get them into the, the habit of logging on and doing their work and, and, and looking at the content. Otherwise, I think you guys are all nailing it. It's, it's a long time to be on remote learning and we can get fried pretty quickly, so we have to be creative about it.
And Caroline, we do have a summer survey that we're going to be doing as well, right?
Yes, we are in, we haven't really confirmed the parameters of it as of yet. But to your points, we don't know who would be available to participate. So whether it's special education, title one, beyond that, what are, what are the families and the students interest and motivation to, to continue this in a month like July where it's really hot and sunny and nice outside? So just adding on that layer for students in the summer, given that it would probably have to be remote learning, we want to find out from families who is interested, available, motivated to participate as we move forward and make those plans. So that's something that, that we're working on.
Great.
If I may, one, one last thing back to Armina's question. You know, I, I know there's a lot of state assessments and sitting in, in a classroom for a long time, taking away from teaching time doesn't make any sense. But there's a lot of quick assessments like stars or dibbles or others that I know that some schools have. And again, I'd go back to as you're doing all of your work about reentry, if there are resources that you need from the school board to make sure that you have a tool for quick assessments to level set and build that curriculum going forward, I would encourage you to ask for them.
Yes, thank you, Tom. We, we, we will. That is part of the skeleton of that plan is to sort of figure out what assessments we have in place, where we may, may need to fill in in order to give teachers the information to do what they need to do. Yes.
Thank you. Thanks.
Greg Parrish. P P E purchasing. I know you don't know whether you can purchase yet or have to purchase P P E supplies for the district in the fall. Number one, will those types of supplies be available for purchase? And number two, can, are you having conversations regarding the district as a whole rather than the individual districts purchasing on their own to give us more buying or purchasing power?
Oh, the answer to the latter question is absolutely yes. Though on many of these things, I think you've heard us talking about an S A U wide. I, I'm not sure that on some of these things, you're not going to hear us talk about a Southeastern's wide. To achieve even more of what you're talking about, Greg. The, the answer to whether they're available now is I, I don't, I don't know. I, I, my understanding is they're more available now than they were X number of weeks ago. It'll depend on, on what some of these reentry plans look. I, I, I have a feeling you're going to see these, these things in place on some degree in most districts. And we're going to have to start figuring that out very soon in terms of our, our purchasing.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else before we transition? That was the short version tonight. Okay. Jim, would you like to transition to the summer food service proposal?
That's good.
Mr. Ferrari, do you want to talk about the proposal that we have on the agenda for summer food service?
Yes. So, you know, we all understand that food security is really an important part of student learning. So, you know, during this remote learning environment, you all know we're continuing our meal program. We're actually providing free meals through the seamless summer program. They, they extended it or they, they created a waiver so we could do it during the school year. They also offered a waiver so that we could do non-congregate meals. So that means that they don't need to eat in a physical space together. They, we can do the, the bag lunches at the pickup locations as well as the delivery. So, so our, we have a school nutrition team that's just been incredible. And they've been, you know, preparing those meals, you know, for the equivalence of seven days a week. And there's three days that they do this preparation. And that's, that's Monday. So two, two meals on, I'm sorry, well, four meals because it's breakfast and lunch on Monday and Wednesday, and then three days worth on, on Friday. And that's at Winnicott and at Seabrook. And that's open to all of our students across all five towns. So this, this has really been an incredible, you know, real success. We've seen the numbers of participation trending up almost every week. We're currently, I, I think we're in like the two eighties right now. The last couple days have been in that range. And as we progress through this, this crisis, we do anticipate that we will have more students participate. I think, I think we've been hearing that from the towns and we've, you know, we've been hearing that from our, from our families. So we, we do feel that it's really important that we continue this meals program during the summer after, after school ends, which is currently scheduled for June fourth. You know, we'd like to provide, you know, nutritious meals with no gap in service through to the start of the school year in the fall. Just, just because we, we understand that families, they are struggling, and they'll, and they will continue to struggle. And we want, we want to make certain that we support all of our students and our families, you know, with, with those meals as we continue through with whatever our summer school program is, whether, I mean, you know, likely remotely. So we do anticipate that we should get USDA reimbursement if we were to do a, a, a school nutrition program over the summer. We, we know that we would if we, if we, if we offered it at a location and people congregated and ate on-site. However, that's, that's not, that's not a good idea. That's not something we intend to do. We would like to maintain the current structure of the bagged meals for pickup and delivery. So as such, we do need that waiver. The, the USDA granted that waiver for the school year. New Hampshire has submitted a new waiver to exempt the, the congregate meals over the summer. But that has not been, that has not been approved yet. However, we are, we are confident that, that that will occur. You know, the estimated total cost to run the summer food service program is in the $175,000 range. You know, again, this is across all five districts, and this assumes an increase in students. So we, we estimated 400 students. So like I said earlier, we're currently at 280. So we did increase that number for our estimate, and that would be 80 days worth of meals, and it would be staff working 45 days, because obviously we're, you know, we're only working three days a week, providing meals for the remainder of the, the days. So this includes food, the supplies, labor, as well as the delivery cost. So that would be the, the buses that are transporting the meals. So assuming that the state does receive that, that waiver, which we have no reason to believe that it, that will not occur, you know, we should, we should be getting the bulk of those funds reimbursed, you know, $155,000 from the USDA. So that leaves us, you know, approximately $20,000 out of pocket. However, there is potential Care Act funds. Again, we don't have the guidance on those funds, so we're not certain if it would qualify. But I'm, I hope you all saw that we, we did initiate a fundraising campaign five days ago on GoFundMe, and that, that's to raise money to support this program. And, oh, man, I'll tell you, we, the community, you know, the community support that we've seen has just been amazing. So it's been live for five days, and it's already raised close to $8,000. It's, it's really been just a, a real heartwarming, you know, at least for me to see, because I'm, I'm seeing the money come in on, you know, on an hourly basis, really. And, you know, the, to see the support from the, from all these different people. I mean, and, and I'll tell you, you, you look through the names, and there's a, a very large percentage that are, that are staff, teachers and staff of SAU 21. And it's just really, it's a really amazing to see. I, I never in a million years thought that we'd raise that much money that quickly. But, but we do feel that through these, these funding sources and, and the, just this incredible generosity from our community that we can operate this program at a cost-neutral basis. You know, if for some reason, you know, we did not cover all the expenditures, there would, those costs would be allocated to our individual school districts, their school nutrition budgets on a, on a per-student basis. So, so as such, we are recommending that the Joint Board approve the operation of an SAU 21 summer food service program for this coming summer of 2020. Be happy to answer any questions.
Matt, Mike Rabado. A question regarding the 280 versus the 400. Why don't we have closer to 400 at this point, considering we may have 400 during the summer?
Well, I, well, I think there's a couple of factors here. One is that, you know, I think that families, you know, they're, they're going, they're going to start to struggle more as we progress through here, and, and more, more families will lose employment, and, and will, will need to. Another factor may be, you know, we, we continue to try to market this program, but there, there may, you know, we, we need to continue to get the word out to people, because when you look at our free and reduced population, that population is higher than the 280. So regardless of the crisis, we know that there are families that are in need. So it's the, really, the, the impetus is on us to, to continue to market this program and let, let our community know that we are offering these meals. And we're trying to do that. We, I mean, we, every, every parent forum, Caroline is espousing the benefits of this program. We have it up on all our websites. We're putting it on social media. You know, we, we're, we're trying to get the word out. It's, it's been out on numerous emails and letters, you know, from the superintendents. But as this crisis progresses, families will, will, will struggle more. So we, we feel that it's going to increase as we go. And, and I'm, to your point, I'm surprised there aren't more people now.
Right. Yeah, Mike, a former colleague of yours on this board, who now sits on one of the select boards in one of our town, shared with me a while back his theory that when the second round of PPP, the Paycheck Protection runs out, that he believes that that's when you're going to see an even more significant number of unemployed. We've, we've sort of run that theory by our town partners in these meetings we've had this week, and to the person, they agree that there's a wave, another wave of, of sort of unemployment or underemployment coming in the, in the summer months, in the early summer months. So that's, that's, that's another reason why we, why Matt made these, uh, these estimates in the way we did.
Great, thank you.
So can I, um, get a motion to approve operation of SAU 21 Summer Food Service Program for 2020?
Make that motion.
I second.
Leslie and Nermina.
Say your name whenever you make the motion.
Oh, Leslie.
I second Nermina Peterson.
Thank you both. Are we ready for roll call?
Yeah. Well, I guess, anybody have any further discussion before we go on?
Okay, Aaron Stanton.
You're muted.
Aaron Stanton.
I wasn't muted.
I didn't hear you.
Yeah, you are.
Yes.
Yay.
Yes.
I'm calling Greg Parish now.
Yes.
Greg Duffy.
Yes.
Henry Marsh.
Yes.
Jessica Brown.
Yes.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
John Bailey.
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
Mike Rabado.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Heidi Terrasina.
Yes.
Jason Ferrius.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Kelly Huber.
Yes.
Martin Tavashian.
Yes.
Nermina Peterson.
Yes.
And Tony Delano.
Yes.
Thank you. I have the vote recorded.
Great, thank you. Jim, can I just mention, because I know the other two items here are, are, are non-publics, but it'll save us some time if I go to E, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So Rhonda, I believe, sent you materials on the NHSBA upcoming webinars, including the webinar series that they're going to do for the two sessions, I believe, they're doing for new members. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do the sessions that we had planned originally to do in our SAU. These are great sessions, and we hope that new members that you're able to sign up for those. I think it's worth your time.
Great.
And so we need a non-public under Rhonda. Can you help me?
I have it under A.
Thank you.
So can I get a motion to enter a non-public session under RSA 91-A?
I'll make that motion.
Mike Rabado?
Yes.
Heidi Terrasina, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Are we ready to take a vote?
Yes.
You're ready, Aaron. Here you go. Here's your big moment.
I mean, it's so tough. All right, I'm ready.
You're still first.
Aaron Stanton.
Yes.
Greg Parish.
Yes.
Greg Duffy.
Yes.
Henry Marsh.
Yes.
Jessica Brown.
Yes.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
John Bailey.
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
Mike Rabado.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Heidi Terrasina.
Yes.
Jason Ferrius.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Kelly Huber.
Yes.
Martin Tavashian.
Yes.
Nermina Peterson.
Yes.
And Tony Delano.
Yes.
Okay, the vote has been recorded. We do have three guests attending, so what I'm going to do, before you guys start talking non-public, we're going to bring them in and play, put them on hold. That way you can do your non-public. And then they will, we will put them back in to join the meeting once the meeting is over. So if you just give me a moment. Okay, those guests are on hold.
Uh, recording resumed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I'll make that motion.
So Jessica. Jessica Brown making a motion.
I'll second Nermina Peterson.
Nermina. Jim, let me know when we're ready for roll call.
Hi, anybody have any further discussion? I think we're ready.
Aaron Stanton.
Yes.
Greg Parish.
Yes.
Greg Duffy.
Yes.
Henry Marsh.
Yes.
Jessica Brown.
Yes.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
John Bailey.
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
Mike Rabado.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Heidi Terrasina.
Yes.
Jason Ferrius.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Kelly Huber.
Yes.
Martin Tavashian.
Yes.
Nermina Peterson.
Yes.
And Tony Delano.
Yes.
Okay, I have that vote recorded.
Next on our agenda is the, can I get a motion to allow SAU 21 non-union employees and administrators to roll over our remaining 2019, 20 vacation days to June 30th, 2021. That's a one-time exception.
So moved.
Second.
So I have Tom Von Jess making the motion, and who made the second?
Leslie.
Leslie, okay, thank you. Jim, tell me when we're ready for roll call.
I think we're ready for roll call.
Aaron Stanton.
Yes.
Greg Parish.
Yes.
Greg Duffy.
Yes.
Henry Marsh.
Yes.
Jessica Brown.
Yes.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
John Bailey.
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
Mike Rabado.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Heidi Terrasina.
Yes, and thank you for all you're doing.
You're welcome. Jason Ferrius.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Kelly Huber.
Yes.
Martin Tavashian.
Yes.
Nermina Peterson.
Yes.
And Tony Delano.
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you very much.
You.
Great.
So just a reminder, join us on Saturday, where we'll have all the elementary principals for the Zoom call. It should be very interesting. And don't forget about those NHSBA, particularly the new member workshops. If you can, if you can do one of those, that'd be great.
Are the school board meeting listings coming up? And we don't have another joint board update until Tuesday, May 19th, because of all the school board meetings occurring prior to that?
I know you'll miss-
Sorry.
Sorry, Leslie.
Well, that's okay. Do we have a Winnicott one? No, I didn't see that on the list.
The Winnicott is actually May 20th.
May 20th, okay, thanks.
But can I ask David Hobbs one quick question? Sorry, everybody. David, it's Greg Parish. Is V-Lax part of the summer program conversations?
It is part of the summer conversations, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I second.
Some favor waved their hands.
Thank you, everyone.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Everybody.